I think Merrill's gonna have a good football team next year.
Don't get started on that.
It should've just popped up.
Says live up in the corner.
Yes, we're live.
Hold on one second, gentlemen, I'm trying to confirm. I don't wanna, this is important. Okay, all right, Chairman, we are live.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Knoll, and I want to welcome everybody to this meeting of the Board of Garrett County Commissioners on this Monday, December 7th of 2020. I would like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Knoll, do you have any additions, deletions, or changes to the public meeting agenda?
Yes, sir, just like to change the order of the agenda. We'd recommend we move the legislative update from Senator Edwards and Delegate Biceau to the beginning of this meeting, and move the comments by Mr. Stevens to the end.
All right, having said that, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So move.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Agenda as amended approved by mutual consent. Everybody got minutes in advance of the meeting? Are there any additions, corrections, or concerns with the minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, the minutes are approved by mutual consent. And with that, Mr. Knoll, I'll turn it over to you as we want to welcome Delegate Biceau and Senator Edwards to our meeting for our annual legislative update. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Knoll to start that process.
All right, and I think we'll start with Debbie Olston from the Representative Liquor Control Board, and she can give the their legislative request to the delegation. Debbie? You're muted, Debbie, if you're speaking. Still don't hear you. Okay. I know she's on. So let me go ahead and do the counties, and then we'll get back to Debbie. The county has one legislative request. This was submitted by the Board of Governors of Garrett Memorial Hospital or Garrett Regional Medical Center. This is to change the number of members of the Board of Governors of the hospital. Currently, there are fifteen members on the Board of Governors. The recommendation is to change it to nine members. Those nine members would be three members for the, from representing the Board of County Commissioners, a representative of the president of the town of Oakland or their designated, a member of the medical staff of Garrett Memorial Hospital, and four at-large members. Currently, there are three members that, three additional members that have been appointed by the Board of Commissioners. So that would be six, and there are seven at-large members. So we're going to, three from the county commissioners, the president of the council, one from the medical staff, and four at-large. The other change would be that the terms of the at-large members, which is two years, they be staggered. So the two are elected for one, the first year, and the other two are elected the following year. And the other change is the board meetings. Currently, they, the legislation says they shall meet at least ten times per year, and the recommendation is to change that to six times per year. This is being recommended by, requested by the Board of Governors at the hospital, they feel will make for a better organization to, to run the, the meetings. The commissioners have looked at this, and they are in agreement with, with these changes. So that, because it is written into the code, we need your authorization to make that change, and then we can change the ordinance at the county level. Any questions on that particular change?
You, you said it probably, Kevin, I might have missed it. The four at-large, how do they get appointed? Who appoints them?
They're, they're, they are selected by a, by the Board of Governors. So they're recommended to the Board of Governors and appointed by the Board of Governors.
Okay, thank you.
Is, is that currently the case? Does the Board of Governors have appointees at this point in time?
Yes, currently it is seven, we're just changing it to four.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And that is the only legislative request we have. Debbie, are you on there now? There she is. Nope, still no, still no audio. I see your picture. Nope, still no audio.
Debbie, it shows you as being on mute right now.
Get out to bottom and run her thing across there and unmute it.
You had it there for a second. There.
Still don't hear you.
Maybe her computer's hooked up to her speaker.
Debbie, if you have a laptop and it's plugged into a dock, try unplugging it from the dock.
No.
If she can't get through, just have her.
I can, I can do it real quick.
Try now, it said connecting.
No. I'm showing her, I'm showing her she's unmuted here, so. Okay, so, Deb, there is four amendments or changes for the alcohol legislation. The first one is Article AB, Section 21-1001G, art established license fee. So the annual license fee is $205. We're going to strike in addition to a one-time issuing fee of $250. So they're removing the issuance fee and just going for a annual license fee. Debbie, if I say anything wrong, just nod or shake your head. The second one is Section AB 21-904G, two Class C Beer Wine and Liquor License. They're going to strike, the board shall charge a one-time issuing fee for a new license in the amount equal to the annual license fee. So again, it's a housekeeping change to eliminate the one-time issuing fee. The third one is Section AB, Section 21-1312, purchasing options for a holder of a Class C Per Diem Beer Wine and Liquor License. A holder of a Class C Per Diem Beer Wine and Liquor License may purchase beer and wine from a wholesaler or beer or wine and liquor from a retailer. That's going to be eliminated and replaced with a holder of a Class C Per Diem Beer Wine and Liquor License may purchase alcoholic beverages sold under the license from a Maryland licensed wholesaler or retail dealer. So that gives them the ability to purchase it from a licensed wholesaler or retailer. And the final one is AB, Section 4, Article 4, Section 109A4, required information on application in general. The application is a resident of the jurisdiction in which the applicant proposes to operate under the license. That's going to be changed to the applicant is a resident of the state in which the applicant possesses, proposes to operate on the license. So I think we've had some cases where an applicant had been a resident of the state but not of the county. This is making it a resident of the state of Maryland. Debbie, did I cover everything? Okay, I believe so. So those are the, those are the legislative requests that Garrett County will submit this, this session. The commissioners, I believe, are in support of the recommendations from the Liquor Board, and we will give you a letter of that effect.
Question?
Yes.
What, that, that change on the resident, rather than being a resident of the county, a resident of the state, that's applicant only, right? If they're resident of the state, do they still need to get all the signatures from people that are in the election district where they're applying for the license?
Yes, yes, yes.
The other thing is, since we can't hear Debbie, can George a question? Do we want to request this before session or wait till session to request it? And if you want to request it before session, can we just have Debbie contact either Ben, my guy, or Victoria and have them request the legislation for both of us? How you want to do that, George? Bear on mute, George.
That's, that's fine.
What, you want, want her to contact Ben or Victoria? I, Ben can take care of this if you want.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Yeah, we'll give him a little work.
What?
We'll give him a little work so he don't get rusty.
He's, he's not getting rusty, he's been really good. So Debbie, can you contact Ben, send this to Ben, and then work with the Legislative Services people? You, you know who to work with down there to make sure they, what, once we get it drafted, we'll send it to you and make sure it's in the order that you want it.
And would you like me to send, would you like me to send my Rs to Ben also?
Yeah, I would do that also.
Okay.
And I guess we cross-file both of those, right, George?
Yeah, and there's four, four requests in the liquor issue.
Okay, put them all.
Before, if we can put them all in one bill, would work. If not, then we have to have separate bills. Last couple of years, I think we put them all in the same bill.
Exactly, makes it a lot easier.
Yeah, we want to, because this is going to be a kind of unique session, so if it gets hung up in one, it might get through the other and then passed on to the other one quicker.
And I think you can hear me, so if you have any problems, I, I'm sure Ben will take good care of you. And if you need to go to Victoria, I'm sure she will too, but go ahead and, and same for Kevin, submit, submit them to.
Yes.
And then he'll make the request, and then when we get the draft legislation, we'll send it to you to make sure they're in the form, it's in the form that you desire.
Okay, very good, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back to you.
All right, I don't know if, if you guys want to give any kind of update or overview. I know you're going to have your own meeting for constituents to address some things, but, and I know we had our meeting this morning with the public schools. Is there, there anything you guys want to share? Or, or are there any specific questions from Jim and Larry to the senator or the delegate while we have them here?
I don't have any questions.
You don't have any questions, Jim?
Well, I could. So would this be the right time to ask about Kerwin and what's going to happen with Kerwin and, and our, the improved funding ratio that we were going to get with Kerwin?
Yeah, hey, George, if I could just jump in there real quick, I'll let you explain that, but we're not going to have a pre-session meeting because of the, the COVID situation. So this would be a good opportunity for people listening in. If anyone's listening in, we can explain a little bit about the session, but George, go ahead and ask, ask, answer his question.
Well, just, just follow up first with what Wendell said. We're going to put out a news release saying that because of the situation, we're not going to have a public meeting like we usually do, but it'll have all of our email information, so if anybody needs anything, they can email whoever they want to email to ask for, so. In the near future, what's today, Monday, maybe up this week, not too late, in the Republican Times and to the radio station. So that's how we're going to do it this year. It's a kind of unique year. Well, to answer Jim's question, it's my, here's my understanding through what I hear through the grapevine from leadership of is that they're going to override the veto of Kerwin. The school construction part you're talking about, I think that's what you asked, is tied to Kerwin. So when he vetoed Kerwin, it automatically vetoed the school construction part. What I hear they're going to do is, is override the veto, which means then the school construction piece is good. Governor definitely supports that. It's a, I think, $2.2 billion increase in school construction funding over a period of time. So it's additional on top of what they do every year. And, excuse me. And then they're going to pass another bill, we'll call it Kerwin 2. We don't know what that's going to be yet, because as you look at what passed, the finances don't look that great as it did whenever they passed the bill, so. Well, I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is that they'll redo a Kerwin Number 2 bill and pass it. We don't know what's going to be in it yet. But that way, we're assured that the school construction bill will move forward, and then we'll just have to see what the leadership in the House and the Senate want to put in a new Kerwin bill. So that's, that's the latest I know about it.
Thank you.
Answer your question?
Yes. Thank you.
Anything else you all want to mention or update while we're all together here?
One thing I would mention, I know Allegheny County and, and the make has been concerned about highway user. The highway user revenue, you know, that, that bill, I think another three years it has. And, but there's real concern about the highway user revenue. Probably not going to be any impact on what you get this year, but you know, with the purple line, you understand they shut down, and they had $200 million, over $200 million agreement to get that started up again. We, I was on a Zoom conference with the Republicans on the House with the, with the with Secretary of and they've made some, they've made a lot of cuts to highway, highway projects. Mass transit is going to get a bigger, bigger chunk of that. And so I just want to warn you all that with through Medco and everything you can do, keep abreast to what's going on with the, the tran, the highway transportation. I looked at the list of things that's been cut. They've cut almost a billion dollars, I think, from, from, from the state highway budget to address obviously, loss in revenues come from mass transit. The, the airport is, was down ninety percent, off of ninety percent. So the, the Mako, I mean Medco, the Womata system, the bus system, and everything else, the revenue is way down. User revenue is holding pretty good, but I guess, since it all goes in one pool, I guess where a lot of money's going to come from to to brace up those mass transit projects, so that's going to be a problem, I think, going forward, and just want to alert you to that.
Let me just say that our caucus had a Zoom meeting with the governor this afternoon. I brought up the rural broadband issue, and he says he's going to he's pushing rural broadband and would hope to be able to continue the program that was really put in place for a five-year program that state put in 10 million a year, and the feds 10 million a year, and even some of the new money and the federal stimulus are talking that, might have some flexibility for you and some more to go into that, so I think you're probably going to be okay on the rural broadband funding. But you all know how that works, but probably in Wendell 9, you got to apply for whatever, so you have that opportunity there to continue adding people to, to broadband. The other thing I would say is revenue estimate, December revenue estimates come out, isn't it after the 11th, Wendell, or on the 11th, something like that?
I wonder about there, I don't remember the exact date.
I think, yeah, the revenue, last revenue estimates were better than a lot of people thought they were going to be, so. You know, originally, we were looking, when this whole thing hit, they came out with a high of 14, $4.2 billion federal structure or structural deficit. Now it's down to about 2.4 or a high of that, a low of 800 and some million, so. We get a better idea once the new revenue estimates come out, so we're hoping that, and especially if the stimulus comes through package that they're talking about, fair level, some of that's going to go to the state to help offset some of the costs associated with the COVID-19 issue, issues. That we might be in a little better picture than we thought we might be monetarily, so that would be helpful also. And it's, it's going to be a little different. You're not going to be able to come down, come into committees to testify. It'll be all by Zoom and, at least in the Senate, I don't know how the House is doing it. We put the bill in, the bill sponsor gets to testify, and I think they can have four people testify, and then the opposition gets four people. Then it's like two and two, so they're going to really restrict who can. You can always send emails, phone calls, texts to committee members, which you should on issues you have an interest in, so they know what the feeling is of people out in this part of the state. It's going to be quite a different scenario.
Yeah, and even in the committee, in the bill hearings in the committee room, then, they're not going to allow, you know, it'll be done virtually, even we can sit in our office and watch it. I guess we have the option of sitting in our chair, but they're not going to allow members of the public to come into the committee room to testify on the bills. You have to do it virtually. It will, everything will be, would be broadcast virtually, and, and you still have to sign up. And we'll have to work that out with, before we help you sign up to testify, we'll still work with you, and I'm sure we'll have our staff make sure that it, when this thing is finalized and we go into session, that we'll let you know what the actual procedures are when we get there.
Hey, guys, has there been any talk, I know one item that comes up almost every year during this meeting, and there's a, a large constituency that's concerned about and interested in the dredging project at the lake and the amount of money involved there. Is the, is there any talk of the governor adding any money to that project? Either specifically in the budget or through DNR or any other venue to help get the project completed?
Well, there, there's, you know, we, we had, the Congress passed what's called Greater American Outdoor Act, and we've contacted DNR. You, you wrote a letter also to DNR and to the Budget Secretary, asking them to, to fund this project. The, the problem was, there's fifty percent of the money is there now, and they indicated they're going to hold that money. But we've made, basically, I've talked to him about, and, and George also, I think, is looking at just funding the entire project through the DNR budget, and then, then deep, defund the million dollars that they already have out there, but to fund it through the American, the Great American Outdoor Act. DNR is looking at just funding the fifty percent to see if that fifty percent from the feds is eligible for that. They are getting extra money through that act, and so they've indicated they're going to try to fund more money through that, but they haven't indicated how much and if they would fund the entire fifty percent.
And, and we are working on the application for that grant.
All right, anything else?
We will, we, we will continue to work, the governor, try to get money in there, and there is a Western Maryland Economic Development Task Force in place looking at how we can help stimulate economic development in Washington, Allegheny, Garrett Counties. And this may be another avenue if we can get it in the report to show specifically that the lake is owned by the state, and the state ought to be the one funding this. So we'll try to work all different avenues on it. Only other thing is, any, any bond bill requests that you have or you're thinking about or whatever? If you don't have anything at the moment, get it to us before the first of the year, if you come up with something.
We, we have several projects we're working on prioritizing right now that will get to you guys and ask for financial assistance on, examples of which would be there, there's a, a bridge we're looking at replacing some more work at the athletic fields at the, the high, two high schools. Mr. Knoll, what else is on that list?
You know, the bridges and some, a treatment plan at the landfill potentially.
So we'll, we'll get that to you before, before the first of the year, but there, there will be some specific requests for financial help coming your way.
Kevin used the word bridges. You used the word bridge, is it plural or singular?
We have two bridges we'd like to, for consideration, but we probably need to have that discussion with the commissioners to see how they want to prioritize them.
Do any of these fit under the State Department of Transportation Bridge? I mean, they have funding comes through, I think, the federal government.
Right, so, so the, the one.
One of those.
The one, the one would be Swallow Falls, and there is federal funding for that, but I, I believe it's about a million dollars local share that we have for that bridge. And the other one is Snowy Creek Bridge, which is an entire funded entirely by the county. There is no funding available for that.
But George, to your, to your point on the Swallow Falls Bridge, I, I think, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, we've been kind of saving our money for a few years because this is going to be a really big project, and we've been kind of setting aside the, our share of some of the funds from the state and federal government?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's going to be a big project.
Okay.
And before we, before Mr. Chairman, before we, we let them go, I, I just want to thank George and Wendell publicly for the work they did to get money for the, for the football fields. I mean, they're, they're, that's a, that was a, those are great projects that people benefit for years and years, and they turned out, I went down to dedication for the Northern Field, and it's, it's beautiful.
Yeah, I would agree and extend my thanks, and the reception by the community, by the student body, by the, the staff and the, and the communities is, is outstanding and a source of a lot of pride, and wouldn't have been done without your help and support. So thank you, you guys, very much for that.
You just need to get the money so we can finish up now with the bleachers and the lighting and the other stuff.
And the tracks.
And the tracks, yeah.
Well, we, that's why we needed a list of what, while you got some, we got in there for the track. We need a number and specifically what you're looking at for the rest of it.
We, I think we have that, and I'd be remiss if we also didn't thank the school board for their partnership on that and, and everything they did to bring that to, to fruition and, and certainly the work of Rich Wazlowski, who's the facilities director there that, that did did all of the legwork on that, and it was also nice that it was all, at least the construction piece was all local contractors. Did all of the legwork on that. And it was also nice that it was all, uh, at least the construction piece was all local contractors. So that's a, a big plus as well.
I would make one comment on that just for, if there were the public out there, there was been some criticism. That we got money to do the football fields and then there were other needs in the education system that weren't being met. Uh, and just explain that this money came from, from the state capital budget. And operating money and other monies for school construction were not eligible for that. And so if we wouldn't have gotten this money for these two projects in Garrett County, it would have went to another county, someone else, and it would have been used outside of Garrett County.
And, and it could not have been used for other capital improvement.
Exactly.
Said it many times previously.
Right.
Any, anything else?
One second. I just wanted a second, what Wendell said, uh. That money would have went somewhere else in the state. It's a separate pot of money. You know, we did get the school construction bill that hopefully is going to go into effect, uh, amended that, oh, oh, reduce Garrett County's. Uh. Local cost for school construction projects, whether it be a new school, remodeled school, or any other. Capital that you're doing in schools, which would save Garrett County a tremendous amount of money because you'll go from fifty fifty to whatever Allegheny's number is at this point. It's reviewed every two years. Right now they're at eighty seven thirteen. So Garrett could save a tremendous amount of money and actually be able to do some projects. So we, we're trying, Wendell and I are trying to the whole. Bailey where can people have to understand money's come from different pots and if we don't. Get monies out of some of them pots to do what those pots are to do. And going to reduce your taxes or anything else, that money is going to go somewhere else because other counties are ready to grab on stuff. So. Uh, we're just trying to get some of our taxpayer dollars back to Garrett County.
That change in the funding ratio is, uh, is a really big deal. That could mean, that could mean tens of millions of dollars.
That, that's a game changer.
That's a big deal, yeah.
Game changer.
I just want to. Say again, thank you all for your, that, that shows what you can accomplish when different level of government and different governmental entities work together to get things done.
I just want to add my thanks to George and Wendell for all they do for us. The football fields are absolutely great. I wish your kids would have got to use them more, but you know, they'll be there for a long time for their use. So thanks again for everything.
And I, I guess unless there's anything else, I'll just, uh, wrap this up and conclude with a, a comment. Coach Woods made this in the school board meeting and, and reiterated here. Uh, just to, to acknowledge again, something we've all said previously, how fortunate we are. Uh, to have such a great working relationship with our, uh, state delegation, delegate bites will center Edwards. Uh, as well as the local board education and the other local, uh, mayors and, and town councils. It's not like that in every county. It's not like that in every region of the state. And, uh, you're right, we don't get projects like that in, in our area. Uh, without cooperation and collaboration and, uh, it's much appreciated and, and certainly not over. So thank you all again. And, uh, any concluding remarks?
We'll just jump off of here at this point, if you don't mind, and I would just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and, and, uh. We will, uh, obviously, uh. Uh, going into a new session, it's strange with COVID. We hope everybody stays safe and healthy and. We get through this so we can get back to normal as quick as possible.
All right.
Wendell?
Yeah.
Take close your phone, Wendell. I'm going to call you as soon as we're done here. And I would say the same, just, uh. Ditto to what Wendell said. Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, healthy, happy prosperous New Year. Stay safe. And keep busy.
All right. Well, thank you guys and, uh, we'll, we'll be talking with you soon on some of those capital requests.
Okay.
All right, uh.
I'm good.
On through the agenda, uh, next item of business is some appointments. Uh, we'll take these both in a, in a slate. Uh, the first appointment is for the Garrett County Department of Social Services, which is three-year terms. And the second one is for the Ruth and Low Library. Of Garrett County, which are five-year terms. Mr. Knoll, what do you have for us?
Yes, sir. The first one is for the, uh, Department of Social Services Advisory Board. We have, uh. Two, two reappointments, uh. Kurt Lear as the Garrett Regional Medical Center, uh, representative. And Jennifer Van Pelt representing the, uh, Health Department. The other one is a community representative and that's Penny Proudfoot. Uh, Penny was previously the Board of, of Education Representative. I believe she is since retired and they are requesting that she be appointed as a community representative, and these are for three-year terms.
Hey Kevin, I think Kurt Lear is a college representative.
Uh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. College. Yes, I'm sorry. I misread that. Thank you.
And, uh, all these people are willing to serve, Mr. Knoll?
Yes, sir, they are.
And, and I will say Penny's an excellent addition there. I'm glad she's going to continue in that role. Um, and, and for the library board, we'll take these all at once.
Okay, so for the library board, um, is the Board of Trustees for the library. These are reappointments. We have, uh, Tina Buckle, Fred Fox, and Christian Mash. And, uh, these are five-year terms, uh, and they're reappointed appointments and they are, uh, are willing to serve.
Any questions or comments, uh, about the slate of recommendations for both boards? Hearing none, do we have a motion to, uh, approve, uh, the recommendations for, uh, both boards, uh. The, uh. Department of Social Services and the library.
Make them approve them.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion is second, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, uh, we have a, a couple of, uh, resolutions. Um, the first one is, uh, the Maryland Department of Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG. Uh, which is what we had our, uh, hearing on last meeting. Uh, Mr. Knoll, what do you have for us?
Uh, yes, sir. This is a resolution for, uh, authorizing, uh, community action to submit a grant. Uh, to, uh, a grant application to, uh, Community Development Block Grant. Uh, uh, for funds not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars. Would you like me to read this?
Um, I'm trying to find. I have the other one and I can't, yes, if you can read that, uh, that would be perfect.
Certainly. This is Resolution twenty, twenty dash six, a resolution authorizing the submission of an application for and on behalf. Of the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland, a body politic. And corporate and a, and corporate and a political subdivision of the state of Maryland, the county. Seeking Maryland Community Development Block Grants for Funds Not to Exceed Eight Hundred Thousand Dollars. The state of Maryland through the Department of Housing and Community Development. Has solicited applications from eligible jurisdictions to apply for funding under the Maryland Community Development Block Grant Program. The program is designed to prevent, prepare for, and to respond to community development and homelessness needs. The county is eligible to apply for funds from the program. Has held their required public hearing related to the formulation of his application for funding under the program. And understands and acknowledges that it could be responsible for, for complete completion of grant activities. And any corrective action, including the repayment of funds if necessary. Now therefore be it resolved and ordained by the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland, the seventh day of December. Twenty twenty as follows. The explanation set forth above is incorporated as a substantive provisions of this resolution. The submission of applications to the Department of Community Development Block Grants. Uh, for program funds awarded not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars, be and is hereby approved for the following projects. Engineering for a regional wastewater treatment plant, home repair program, kitchen equipment for a senior center and a homeless initiative project. The chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, Paul C. Edwards, be and is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents required to be submitted. The app, required to submit to the applicants to the department. Be it further resolved and ordained that this resolution shall be effective December seventh, twenty twenty by the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland. Adopted this seventh day of December, twenty twenty, Board of Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland.
Thank you. And right after you started, I found my copy.
Okay.
You for, uh, pinch hitting, uh.
You would have done a much better job reading it.
Yeah. Any, uh, any questions or comments, uh, Mr. Knoll? I'm assuming we received no comments, uh, in the open comment period.
We did not.
Uh, if there are no, uh, other. Questions or comments, do we have a motion to adopt Resolution Number twenty, twenty dash six? Uh, for the CDBG grant funds for eight hundred thousand dollars?
So move.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion is second, a question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, next item of business on the, uh, meeting agenda. Is, uh, Resolution twenty twenty dash seven, a contract to sale in the McHenry Business Park for a three-acre parcel and, uh. I'll turn that over to Kim Durst from the Economic Development Department, uh, to give us a rundown on that. Kim?
Sorry about that. Took me a few minutes. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Um, so I'm asking you to consider a resolution authorizing the sale of three acres, which is lot sixteen in the McHenry Business Park. To Timber Ridge Holdings LLC. The purchase price is fifteen thousand per acre for a total purchase price of forty five thousand dollars. The anticipated capital investment is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the business anticipates hiring ten to twenty-five employees, a combination of full-time, part-time, and seasonal within the next five years.
Any questions for Kim before I get into the resolution? All right, hearing none, uh, the resolution. Reads as follows, uh, Resolution Number twenty twenty dash seven. Uh, Resolution to the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland, a body politic and corporate and polit, a political subdivision of the state of Maryland. Authorizing the sale of real property known as portion of lot number sixteen in the McHenry Business Park consisting of three acres. More or less situated in election district number six. Garrett County, Maryland will sell to Timber Ridge Holdings LLC, a Maryland Limited Liability Company for the sum of forty five thousand dollars and authorizing the county to enter in a contract to sale and right of entry agreement. With Timber Ridge with respect to the sale of the real property. Uh, desire to sell the real property known as identified as number sixteen, uh, the McHenry Business Park consisting of three acres. Um, as shown on a plat in total, McHenry Business Park Lot Sixteen dated August twenty eighth, twenty eighteen and recorded on September ninth, twenty eighteen in plaque case TWM two at page eight eight eight. Among the plaque records of Garrett County, Maryland, a copy of which, uh, is attached here to incorporated herein and marked as exhibit number one to Timber Ridge Holdings LLC, a Maryland Limited Liability Company. For the sum of forty five thousand dollars. The specific terms and conditions decree agreement between county and Timber Ridge are set forth in contract to sale. And right of entry agreement, a copy of which attached here to incorporated herein and marked as exhibit number two. In accordance with the provisions of Title Five, Subtitle Three, Sections five dash three oh one through five. Dash three, three, two, inclusive of the economic development article with the annotated code of Maryland. The county has caused this resolution to be prepared to reflect terms and conditions relating to county's authorization to sell the property to. Timber Ridge. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland as follows. Number one, the explanation set forth above is incorporated as a substantive provision of this resolution. Number two, the county authorized the sale of property to Timber Ridge for the sum of forty five thousand dollars. Number three, the county authorized entry in the contract sale and right of entry agreement with Timber Ridge. Number four, the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland, be and is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents as may be necessary or required in conjunction with sale of the property. And number five, the resolution shall be effective upon its adoption. Adopted this seventh day of December, twenty twenty by Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland, by its chairman, Paul C. Edwards, and attested by Kevin G. Knoll, County Administrator. Do, uh, are there any questions on the resolution? Which everyone did get a copy of in advance at a meeting. If there are none, uh, do we have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash seven?
Make a motion to adopt.
We have a motion to adopt. We have a second.
Second.
Motion is second, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Kim, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next, uh, item, uh, on the agenda, uh, is Garrett County Purchasing Department. We have, uh, bid awards for, uh, fire prevention systems. This bid number twenty dash one one zero five F P. Mr. Knoll?
I guess, sir, this bid is for fire prevention services for eight county facilities. This is for the maintenance and upkeep of the, uh. Alarm monitoring system as well as the fire extinguishers. Uh, there was three bids received, ARK Systems, tower renovation and fire protection products. Uh, the rate was, uh, very depending on the location of the, uh, of the equipment and the amount of equipment in each building. Uh, based on a review of the purchasing department, uh, they recommend awarding the bid to ARK Systems.
Any questions, uh, for Mr. Knoll? Uh, Mr., uh. The amount of that bid, I know there are several items on that, uh, Mr. Knoll, um.
Yeah, so depending on the location and there, there's, uh. I don't want to see here.
Basically, it covers all of our property.
Covers all of it and, uh, some of the bidders bid on pieces of it, other piece, other parts. And so the overall contract. Uh, was awarded to, uh, uh, they recommended awarding to, uh. A, ARK Systems. Um. Based on the overall bid.
Any other questions for Mr. Knoll? We have a, a motion to accept the recommendations from the purchasing department for, uh, fire suppression system.
So move.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion is second, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Since we did rearrange the agenda, uh, the legislative update is already completed and we are. Uh, moving on to, uh, the county health department COVID nineteen update. And Mr. Stevens, uh, Bob, appreciate you coming on as always, and, uh, we'll turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, it seems like I've been on this, uh, call with you recently, uh, quite a bit. And I look forward to the time when I will not have to do that. Um, and I would just say that that may take a little while yet. Um, first thing, just to give you an update, uh, we currently have one thousand and forty-four cases, uh, that since the beginning of, of COVID. Um, we've had nine deaths that are recorded to Garrett County. That number will go up. Um, and, uh, one of the reasons is that we have a couple that are pending. Where we have to verify the county and state of residence of the, uh, of the death. Um, and because, um. If a person dies in a nursing home, we, uh, sometimes in Allegheny County nursing home, death can be attributed to us because the person. Lived in Garrett County and is now in Allegheny or vice versa. Um, and so, uh, that's why we don't have that exact number right now. But, uh, we believe that number will go up unfortunately. We are currently, our positivity rate is seventeen point seven, uh, percent. That ranks us second in the state. That's not something to be proud of. Our case rate is one hundred and twenty-two per hundred thousand, and that's the third highest. I would point out though, that, um, for the first seven months of this pandemic. The Garrett County had the lowest rate in the state. Allegheny County had the second lowest. the Garrett County had the lowest rate in the state. Allegheny County had the second lowest. Somerset County had the third lowest. Since October, Allegheny County has had the highest. Somerset is the second highest, and Garrett is the third highest. That's not unlike what we see in a lot of the states in the upper Midwest that had very low case rates. And then I don't want to say it was their turn, but it does seem like that, that occurred to us. One of the things, just to let you know of the current numbers that, that are out there that are, that are currently identified and, and within that ten-day isolation period, one hundred and forty-one of those are in nursing homes. And that's about fifty percent of the current cases. It's very easy when there is an outbreak in a nursing home or a facility like one of the forestry camps or in a detention center for it to, to just really get out of control in a hurry. And so, so we, unfortunately, we have that situation. Garrett Regional Medical Center, the last update we had from them was that they had a forty-two percent bed occupancy. It was over ninety percent last week, so that number has come down a little bit. That's a good thing. I would like to say that Garrett Regional and all the hospitals regularly plan for what they will do if they get to a hundred percent occupancy because one hundred percent occupancy does not mean that they don't have any more room in the hospital. It means that all of their regular beds are full, and then they begin to make contingency plans, and they drill for that every year. And you, in most years, it does not happen, but unfortunately, there are hospitals around the state that that's occurring right now. I want to cover several different things, and if you have any questions, please jump in and ask me because I know that you field a lot of questions, complaints, concerns from the general public. And so if you get those, you can go ahead and ask me some of those things, but I'll touch on a lot of those. One of the things is for enforcement complaints come in, can come in. One of the best ways is through the state tip line, and that goes to MEMS, which is an emergency management line that's handled by the Maryland State Police. That gets recorded. They all get forwarded to us. If there's an immediate concern, then the Maryland State Police goes out. Sometimes we, they ask us to go and investigate some of the concerns that are not so urgent because certainly they have some things in law enforcement that are more urgent than, than, you know, somebody having a complaint about a, you know, somebody not wearing a face mask correctly in a, in a certain store. I don't want to belittle that, but that's just the way it is. One of the things, the Liquor Control Board partners with us and does an excellent job with compliance. We have two areas where, where we have very good, we've always had very good compliance, and that's with people who serve alcoholic beverages, bars, liquor stores. We've had some concerns, and we, and they've, Liquor Control Board has gone out and investigated and issued orders of compliance, and that's because they can take that, that organization's license away. Also, the Health Department, we do a very good job, I think, with food service. And so places that, restaurants, foods with a deli, even convenience stores that have, that have food service. When we get complaints, we have some, some ability there to go in, and if they're out of compliance, we have a lot of leverage. Unfortunately, we don't have as much of that with, with retail and some of the other businesses. And that's where Maryland State Police typically comes in on those as well as local law enforcement. Most of the complaints that come into that tip line have to do with face masking. So I'm, I'm gonna, I know that Mr. No had forwarded me some concerns that people had about face coverings. And so I wanted to just cover some of those things. First of all, there is a face masking or a face covering definition, and that's a face covering means a covering that fully covers the person's nose and mouth securely to the person's head, but is not a medical grade mask. The term face covering includes without limitation scarves, bandanas, and plastic full-face shields. So I have one of my every days. It's not every day. I have lots of every days because you're supposed to wash these every day. And so this is how it should be worn. It should not be worn like this, and it should definitely not be worn like this. And when people are doing that, they're out of compliance. The full-face shields, I have one of those right here. I've worn that when we do some of our testing events because we have to have proper personal protective equipment. And so, but that, that full-face shield, those, there are some things where they, they really do come in handy in certain situations. They are not ideal, nor are any of the, the face coverings ideal, but they do serve a purpose, and they do help to, to mitigate the risk. But in particular, if somebody has a, some, a lot of people with disabilities, people who are deaf, they need to be able to, or, well, if they're deaf, then sometimes, and I know in the school system, that face shields are used in order to help the students be able to read lips and different things like that. But there are some times where those, there are people that are unable to wear a cloth face covering, and so they can go to that clear plastic shield. None of those things are as good, you know, in particular, the neck gaiters, they cover, they, they qualify as a face covering. Are they as effective? By no means are they as effective. But if everybody would comply with that, then the, the benefit is that it would be, it would be beneficial to society in general. There's also, there's also medical grade, and so I have one of these that we use these. Health Department uses these, our home health nurses, when they go out, our, our staff, when they're in the general public and doing some type of investigation, they'll, this is what you'll find them wearing. When I said our, our home health nurses, when they're actually in the, the, the facility, then they'll wear an N ninety-five mask. And here's a, one of those. N ninety-five masks need to be fit tested and worn properly. If they're not worn properly, then they're probably no better than, than another mask because they have, each person's face really needs to fit into that particular type of respirator. One of the exceptions is that if people have a bona fide disability or medical concern that where it's unsafe, they may not be required to wear a face covering. And so I would tell you this, that if you go into a, into a retail store and you see ten percent of the people, this is in a, in a busy store, you see ten percent of the people wearing a, without a face covering, there's probably some people in there that do not have a bona fide reason. If you see one person in, in, let's say, one person in Lowe's or one person in Walmart, there's, there may be a possibility that person has a bona fide reason, a medical concern. And so it's still okay to, if, to ask that person about, about why they're not wearing a face covering. Our staff have done that and sometimes have, the person is able to, to demonstrate that they do have this bona fide need. But it's, it's hard to, to, to determine that right off the bat. So it's really important that people wear the face coverings. Some of the other things with the law, though, that I wanted to make clear is that retail establishments, subject to applicable orders, all retail establishments shall, in good faith, and to the extent possible, post signage at every entrance advising customers about the requirements of, to wear face coverings described in this paragraph. And as well, their, their employees need to be wearing the face covering because they can be charged for that. But if, if a customer is not wearing a face covering, that customer is liable. And so when people are concerned about a, a retail store or going someplace and they see people without those face coverings, contacting Maryland State Police or, you know, contacting law enforcement, they go out and investigate. And if the person does not put on a face covering, then they can be charged. And if the establishment chooses to play hardball and, and ask people to leave the, the facility, and we have some, some great proprietors who do that, they don't allow anybody in. And if somebody refuses, then they can be charged with, with trespassing. And so there are some, it's harder to enforce that than what a lot of people think, but it, it's, we do have some, some agent or some proprietors who are doing a great job, and, and I'm, I'm so thankful for them. As I mentioned previously, a lot of, what we're finding, though, is that, you know, it is so important to have that, those regulations in place. But in all reality, and I've stated this before, the places where people are getting COVID, for the most part, are in, now we have nursing homes where there has been a break-in personal protective equipment because remember, they have to eat too. The staff have to eat. Bars, restaurants, churches, family gatherings, places where people feel awkward taking, wearing a face covering. If you come to my house, any of you come to my, would come to my house, I would ask you to wear a face covering when you come in. It might feel awkward. You might think that I'm rude, but that's what, that's what should, should happen because we need to stop this spread. And the only way to stop the spread is really to stop it in those, in those gatherings where people come together. And so I wanted to bring that up. Testing, I know people have had questions about testing. We are testing twice a week. We're trying to set up testing for Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. That may be a challenge, but we are Tuesdays and Thursdays having testing at the Medco Building in the McHenry Business Park. That's, I, I say that that's equally inconvenient for both sides of the county. It's not the most convenient location, but it is the safest location for our, for our, our staff and for the people who are coming to be tested. We have one lane that is for drive-through for people who are symptomatic, and, and other people will come into the building. It's a, it's an enormous building, and we are really glad of the partnership and that we have with the county to make that space available and with Medco to make that space available. A lot of work went into it by the county, from the county, and the County Roads Department helps staff that. A lot of the facilities folks have been out to help make sure that it was prepped. We could not do that testing out there without also the cooperation of school nurses, emergency management, and also some volunteers. So we test from nine to twelve thirty on Tuesday and Thursday from ten to two. I'd like to make two comments about that. One is come tomorrow from nine to twelve thirty. Be patient with us. This, we got kicked off of the state lab, so we have a new lab that's going to be doing our, our testing. We hope that it is actually going to be a better fit because we think that we'll get our results back faster, and it'll, it'll be a more streamlined process. But the reason we were taken off of the state lab is because testing all the way across the country is so high that the state lab could not keep up. And so, and so they, so we were diverted to another lab, and so tomorrow's our first day that we'll be doing that. And so there could be a little bit of waiting around there, so please be patient with us. Also.
Hey, Bob.
Yes, sir.
I don't mean to interrupt, and I apologize. I, I have a couple of questions basically related around what you're talking about right now. So I think now is the appropriate time to ask them. One, just out of curiosity, because this is the first. I think most people are hearing about the, the change in the lab. Where's the new lab located? If we're not pushing the Maryland State one, where, where are we getting our testing from now?
This is, is called Mako, like the shark, M A K O. It's actually in North Carolina. But even though it's in North Carolina, we can, the, the shipping process is quicker, and they're having an average turnaround time of two days where the state lab was three to four days. And part of that was because we also, in order to get our tests to the state lab, we had to drive them before, we had, we had to be on the road by three o'clock in order to deliver them to the courier in Allegheny County because the state courier does not serve Garrett County. It just goes to the regional lab in Allegheny County.
The, the other, two other real quick questions. How successful, do you, do you have any guesstimate on the numbers of people who we are testing on Thursday, Tuesdays, and Thursdays?
We, we had, I think on last Thursday, I want to say we had about a hundred and seventy that came through. And, you know, we're, we're hoping as the word gets out that we'll have, we'll be able to test more. And, and I'll, I'll say this, all the, all of those peoples that, that are in the county who would like to talk to the health officer should come to be tested tomorrow. If they want to tell me, you know, their ideas for how they can, we can improve in the county, I, I will be there. I will actually be the, the site commander, so to speak. Our director of nursing and I are sharing that duty from, I do Tuesdays and she does Thursdays. So if somebody really thinks that, you know, where there's things the health department should be doing differently, please come out. I'd like to have an extended conversation because as, as was evident in some of your discussion earlier, some of the things that seem one way or not, the way they appear, like the building of the, the turf for the football fields, you could not take that money and use it just for anything you want. And so some of the things that people think are, are, are great ideas, sometimes they're, they're more of a challenge for us. And, and so I'd, you know, I'd be glad to talk to people. And I, I honestly, some, some people also have great ideas. I had a gentleman the other day gave me some great ideas on how to improve our system.
And I'm glad that you mentioned the, the school nurses chipping in, especially after the governor specifically mentioned that last week. So it is important for our folks here to know that our school nurses are engaged and collaborating and working cooperatively with, with the Health Department. I have had a couple of questions actually very recently from some folks who are interested in volunteering to help with this. If someone's watching this right now or sees this later, and they're interested in chipping in and helping out, how would they go about doing that? Who would they reach out to?
Okay, so the, the easiest way to do that is to sign up through, we have a, we have a portal on our website and where we collect information. And we like to push people through this portal because that allows them to register for Maryland response. And why that's important is that that gives that volunteer protection while they're volunteering, that if something goes wrong for some reason, you know, that they, that there's some, some insurance protection through, through the state tort. So we, we really want people to do that. And so it's on our website, which is garrethealth.org. And so just go in there and look for that. And that's, that's the best way to do that. As far as the, the volunteers, the, right now, we're with the new lab, we're not sure of the staffing needs that we will have because it's going, going to streamline things. It's going to be where people can register ahead, and I think this, hopefully this information got up on our website. We just got the way to do it today, but you can, you can scan a QR code off your, off your phone, off of our website. You put in all of your data information in, into that. When you show up, it's just like boarding an airplane or going to a concert, which none of us have gone to in a long time. You show that QR code, it will allow us to take that information, link it to the, to the lab result, and that person will be able to then go into the lab, and they won't have to wait for a telephone call or a letter or anything like that from the Health Department. And it'll eliminate the problems that we've had in the past with misspelling of names and emails entered wrong and different things like that that sometimes slow down the process. And so we're, we're really going to be entering twenty twenty. We had a, the, the state lab is a, is a great lab, but it is not, it is not up to, to speed with some of the technology. And so we'll be able to register that, people that way. Tomorrow, it probably, probably will be the old-fashioned way a little more where people show up and are not registered ahead of time, but that'll be fine.
Going backward a little bit, and, and I hate to monopolize this, but we get, we get so many questions. Going backward a little bit, and, and I hate to monopolize this, but we get, we get so many questions. You know, while we have you on here, I'd like to make sure we address all of them if, if possible, but I, I hate to get specific on businesses, but they get asked about specifically so often because they are bigger businesses that many people in the whole county go to. We talk about compliance and there's a perception out there, right, wrong or indifferent, that, that, that a lot of, there's a lot of issues at Walmart and Lowe's. I understand that you all looked into that today, actually, again, and I know that you've addressed, you know, you're in constant communication with lots of businesses all the time, but because those two get mentioned so often, is there any, anything you can share with the public about that conversation or what's going on there or the reality of the situation?
Sure. First of all, you know, I've, I've asked our own staff who do some, some shopping in Walmart, who are not even involved with our, with our compliance folks to keep an eye and let us know. And, and what we believe is, is that, you know, compared to other, other areas and other Walmarts, and I'm not so sure about the Lowe's, but we have, we have fairly good compliance here. Sure. When you go in, you're, you're likely to see somebody without a, without a face covering. There's a, there's a possibility of that happening. There's a lot of people in and out. The, our, our staff do go and investigate. Our staff do for, for instance, not only Walmart, but shop and save, we inspect their delis. And so our folks are in there and we have some, we have some leverage there. But with, with Walmart in particular, we go in and, and we inspect whenever we, we get a complaint. Usually it's, it's after a little time has, has passed. But when we go in, generally people feel they're, are in pretty good compliance. We do have some of those folks that do have the fat, the mask down below their nose. You know, I personally have confronted people on that. You know, and but the, it, it is up to the store, the store could forbid that, those people to, from coming in, but they don't have to. And so that's why the individual proprietors can, can take care of that. It's gone all the way up the, the food chain, so to speak, where our, our staff have talked to the manager about having our environmental health staff just go and, and sort of camp out at Walmart. And when people come in, talk to them and, and, and try to determine what the problem is and why they're, they're not wearing the, the face covering. That went all the way up corporate to the Northeast region and it came back down and said, we don't want you to do that. However, their managers are responsible for confronting their customers. Their, their associates are not being advised to confront every person, but their managers are. And so we know that there, there are other businesses that, that do have, do have problems. And we'll have people that will come in and not be wearing a face covering. You know, it's, it's exasperating for them. It's exasperating, you know, when we go out, we send somebody out and then nobody is wearing the face covering. Compliance has been, we have not been getting quite the compliance complaints since our case numbers went up because, you know, quite frankly, we had some business owners who prior to October said, I, I don't know a single person who's had COVID and I don't believe, I believe it's political. I don't believe it's, it's really a fact. And so now that we have more spread in our community and we are, we are a hotspot, we're, we're having more compliance and more businesses that are, that are staying on it themselves.
And, and just quickly, it is accurate that your staff did talk to the management of Lowe's and Walmart today?
Just to, Yes. You know, to be honest with you, I'm not sure about Lowe's. I know they were out to Walmart today. And, and just so, so you know that, that, and I'll, I'll, I'll just bring this up. Lowe's corporately had policies where they were not, they were not having the signage and were not enforcing early on in the, in this pandemic, we're not enforcing face coverings. I brought this up to the, to the, to our attorney general's office. They found out that it was, and it went all across Lowe's corporate. And I ended up talking to the corporate attorney in, in Massachusetts and so they made changes. So they're doing better than they used to, but that was a result of, you know, what happened here locally. And I would say the same thing for sheets. Sheet, there was an issue with sheets. And our, our staff is the one that brought that court to, to the corporate headquarters and had, and gained compliance across the region where, you know, the, the signage that, that was being posted was not appropriate. And so, you know, I, I can say that we've had some successes. Certainly it's exasperating, you know, that, you know, I, I can't go out and write a ticket, you know, that's not in my, that's not something that's been delegated to the, to the health officers. We can, we can close a business for, for being a, a hazard and not, and not a whole, a, a whole range of businesses. Like we can't say we're going to close all grocery stores for instance, but if there is one that is a bona fide public health hazard because people are getting sick there and we can demonstrate that people are getting sick, we can, we can do that. But our contact tracing, before it broke down, and I can talk about that later, but before it broke down, we were not finding spread from the retail establishments. We weren't finding spread in, you know, a lot of the, the, the businesses in the community. We were finding spread in homes, in, in bars and in, in gatherings, some sporting gatherings and churches. That's where we were finding it.
Bob, to that point and with the discussion on churches, you have reached out to pastors or at least your office has, they're aware obviously of the, the concern and that they're, you know, one of the places where we've been able to identify as, as spread. Is that accurate?
Sure. I have, you know, I, I have personally called the, the larger churches. I have not called every church, but I personally took that on myself. I, I can say that we don't get complaints from churches that say, hey, I was in so-and-so church and I don't feel comfortable there. We hear that through the grapevine where somebody says, well, I don't go to, to, to the Joe's, the, you remember Flip Wilson, the church of what's happening now? I don't go there. Or, or I don't go there since COVID started because I don't feel comfortable. And then we hear that through the grapevine, but we don't, no, we don't have people that can, that complain about their own church. We have to, we find out about that where somebody whispers to somebody and it comes to us second or third hand. And, and so, you know, then we can, we can reach out to them. But, you know, that's a, that's a tough one, honestly.
Hey Bob, on the testing, you, you talked about the testing down at the Medco building at, down by the airport, but there's, there are other testing sites in the county too, right? There's testing goes on at other places too, the hospital.
Absolutely. So.
And, and you don't need to name all those, but can, are those places listed on your website if people go to your website?
I, I haven't looked them up on our website lately, but they, previously they were, were identified. You know, the, the problem with, with that is, you know, that those are for, for testing when people have a, they have signs and symptoms for a lot of those. This, the testing we're providing, somebody does not have to have a doctor's order. It's not going to go on their insurance. You know, the, the state and the health department eat the cost on that.
Yeah. And I'm hesitant to bring this up, but Paul mentioned, you know, the comments we've gotten and, and maybe address this is very, very quickly, but one of them was sort of a conspiracy theory thing that all the positives aren't being reported because we don't want the public to panic or we, we don't want tourists to come here because, you know, this and that and the other. I, I, I know it's kind of preposterous, but you're confident that none of that's going on, I assume.
Well, it would be, I would have to say it would have to be quite the conspiracy because we see it. Johns Hopkins reports it, they see it. Maryland Department of Health sees it. We, our numbers generally are a little higher because we have, we show the rapid tests which do not have, when somebody comes in and they get a rapid test, sometimes that is, is not, does not go through the surveillance system through the state. And so sometimes our numbers are, are higher than the state. Normally they are, but a little higher. But, you know, if somebody wanted to make that statement prior to, to October, then they could probably make a good argument for it. It'd be hard to argue about it now since we're, our numbers.
Like I said, thank you.
And Bob, last question I have, and then, and then unless Larry has a question, we'll, we'll allow you to, to continue with your information, which we do definitely appreciate and I, I think it's good information. I, I've asked you this every single meeting because I know people in our, in our whole county, because we're so dependent upon tourism and, and everything else. As far as the health department's concerned as of right now, and I, I know the contact tracing has become somewhat of an issue, but up until that point, any indication that the, the tourism industry has been a super spreader or, or concerns there?
Yeah, there, there is, there's always a concern, but is it a super spreader? We don't think so. Because, you know, we are, and again, we have to go from our, our contact tracing. When, when we find somebody who works in a restaurant and we say, well, where do you think you might? And they come up positive, we say, where, where do you think you got that? Well, you know, I, I, I went to family Thanksgiving and my uncle had found out he was positive and now I'm positive. It's not that, you know, I worked at this restaurant and I have no other, it, it just came about. We, we do have a few of those where people really honestly, they don't know where they got it. And, and in that case, we don't know whether that person, you know, that person would have to say, well, were you wearing a face covering? And they're all going to say they were, but in some cases they didn't. And so it, it's, it's hard to see that. We do know that there are, you know, there are some of these, there are some of the, the businesses where, you know, in, in the back office, people don't wear face coverings. And so tourism related business, but in the back office or, you know, and when, you know, in the laundry or, or whatever that places that we typically don't inspect, it's difficult. And, you know, and, and I don't think that's any different than any place around. I will tell you that if we didn't make a, a big deal about it, we would have people with the health department not wearing masks in the back office. You know, and, and, and gathering together, but we make a big deal about it. And so it's, it's, it's hard. So, you know, weeding it out and saying it's, it's being brought here, I don't think that's the case because remember our first bike hit, it began Autumn Glory, which was a scaled back Autumn Glory. It didn't happen after Labor Day. It didn't happen after Memorial Day. It didn't happen after 4th July. Happened after Autumn Glory, which was scaled back and it happened in groupings of where people were locally getting together. Not the, the places where there were, you know, a lot of outsiders coming in. And then, you know, since then, again, you know, we can look at these, these, what we call super spreader events or whatever. And, you know, it, it does, it does go rampant. The problem with this virus is that if I get it and I, if I let my guard down and I get it and then I spread it to my wife and then, and then she spreads it to her three friends and one of those friends works in a nursing home and then people, they have an outbreak at a nursing home and people die, you know, am I not equally culpable to the other, the other person that says the person that worked in the nursing home? No, I was back that string. And so, you know, we, we all have to, to, to work together on this because we don't know if we get it, we could inadvertently spread it to somebody who inadvertently spreads it to somebody who then makes it into a super spreader. And so that's where, that's where the real challenge is. And then, you know, and it, and it, it may not be among, we know the data shows that, that, you know, it, it does not affect everybody the same. The younger you are, the safer you are, the, the less the symptoms are. But, you know, it, it is devastating as what is happening to, you know, our senior citizens. You know, and if, if we care about them, then we need to care about ourselves and, and we need to care about our teenagers because our teenagers could be spreading it to their grandparents. And so it is so important to do that.
I don't have any other questions at this time, so I don't know if there's any other things that you want to hit that you haven't already?
I'm, I'm about 20% in. Actually, actually there's a couple of things I did want to, I did want to comment on, but it's less than, it is less than 20%. There, that I do, I, I wanted to talk about isolation quarantine. It's made big news that Centers for Disease Control, they, their gold standard all along was if some, for isolation is 10 days after you have signs and symptoms or after you've tested positive and then you isolate for that period of time. That has not changed. Quarantine, which has always been 14 days because that takes, that's the length of time that it is possible for somebody to develop symptoms. It has always been 14 days up until about a week and a half ago, CDC changed their guidance. And now they, they have two other options. I'm going to go over what those other options are, but I'm going to tell you that you want to do the 14 days. That's the best. One is for 10 days, a, a person can return to work, you know, at, at, after 10 days. They still have a chance of, they have between a one and a 10% chance of, of spreading it after that time. So, or in developing symptoms in order that they would impact other, other people. So if you're a business owner and you say, I want to eliminate that 10%, then you should tell your people stay 14 days because that's the gold standard. You're not going to, people are not going to be infected from that. So it is possible, but even if you're on that 10-day, it, it, the guidance is not, okay, it used to be 14 days and then I could do whatever I, I pleased. Now at 10 days, it's like, okay, well, you might be able to go back to work, but stay out of the grocery stores, don't go to church, stay, avoid family gatherings, continue to do those types of things that you don't want to spread it. The other is a, the option three is a seven-day option with a, with a test that's a negative that is within 48 hours of the time that you're going to break that quarantine. So if you say, well, I want to break it on day seven, you could technically get tested on day five. And if you're negative, then that, then you may be able to, to break that. And so that also has a risk between five and 12%. And once again, you know, you could say, well, I am cooped up. I'm not going to just stay in my house. I'm, I'm going to go do some limited things. I'm going to make sure that I wear a face covering. If any, if I run into anybody, I'm going to stay as far away from them as possible. That's, you, people can do that. They can get off that quarantine, but they, it, it is not seven days and now you're just free and clear. The way to do that is at 14 days, at 14 days, that's when you really are, regardless of whether it's option, the option, the 10-day option or the seven-day option or the 14-day option, you're really not good until day 14. So, but CDC allowed that because they saw what was happening to the economy. We in Allegheny and Garrett County are, we were prepared to, to have a health officer order that would keep it at 14 days. However, the state, they changed it to, to go with the 14, 10 and seven. And because most of our contact tracing is done by the state, they were, we'll, we'll go along with that, but when we do our contact tracing, what we will tell people is 14 days is the gold standard. That's what you want to do. So the other thing that I did want to cover and I, I thank you for, for bearing with me is, I know people are probably worried about the thank you for, for bearing with me is, uh, I know people are probably worried about the vaccine or they've heard a lot about the vaccine. And if, um, if Mr. Noll would allow me to share my screen at this time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put up a PowerPoint. And, um,
Should work.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to try to do this and I, I just want to go through this quickly. Don't want to take too much time, but to let you know that we are doing, uh, we are in a planning process for that and, uh, so the vaccination planning for the state has been underway since the spring of 2020. And we have a local team of partners, the hospital, uh, the Board of Ed, the county who's, who have been meeting, uh, to be, uh, the, the lead planner on this is our emergency planner from the emergency management, Garrett County Emergency Management. She's leading the planning, uh, component. And we're trying to, uh, you know, come up with the scenarios for the, uh, to, to do the vaccination. New information's coming out, you know, uh, from the federal government on a continual basis. And so it, it's not as clear as what we would hope that it was. There are several vaccine products that are in development. Pfizer and Moderna are the first coming out. The, the thoughts are, um, that Pfizer will come out sometime next week and Moderna will come out the following week. When Pfizer comes out, it's going to be limited availability. Pfizer has 50,000 doses for Maryland. We have a population of about 5 million, 50,000. If you divided that up, uh, equally to the counties, there would be 2,000 doses for us, but we don't, but we have counties in this, in the state that have a million population and we have counties that have 20,000 population. So it'll probably be based on the population. Uh, and they're going to vaccinate critical populations with that. So the general public in phase one is not going to get the vaccination. And the, we're waiting on, uh, the, the CDC to notify the state about the vaccination and the, the distribution plan, but that will go, um, you know, primarily to the hospital. Hospital, uh, will, uh, vaccinate their frontline employees, not their back office people, but their frontline, um, employees. And I'll get into that a little more later. They'll also, uh, uh, nursing homes, uh, are being vaccinated through a partnership with pharmacies. So we don't have to worry about that. The, the pharmacies will be providing, uh, that. The Moderna will, that's coming out, will probably come out, uh, Christmas week. Is for the state is about another, uh, 100,000 doses, I think 104,000 doses. And so we'll probably, that's where we're, we're going to see most of that. When it comes out, the, the Pfizer has to be kept at 80 degrees Celsius, negative 80 degrees Celsius. Well, there's only one, um, uh, freezer in the county that can handle that. And that is, uh, is at the hospital and you have to accept 975 doses. We don't have enough, we probably don't have 975 frontline people to be, uh, vaccinated. Well, I know we don't. Phase two will be the general public. So I'll talk a little bit more about phase one. So phase one is also, as it becomes available, it will go to medical practices, uh, fire and EMS, the, uh, uh, it'll go to the, the, the judiciary, public safety, home health agencies, um, and, um, will also go probably to hospice. Uh, and then we'll go to people that have comorbid, morbid, uh, uh, diseases, uh, such as diabetes or COPD and they're at very high risk. And in general, they'll probably not only in phase one have to be diabetic, but they'll have to be, uh, over 60 or 65. Phase two will begin, um, phase two begins when phase one targets have been met and that's the, uh, vaccinating the general public. And eventually what's going to happen is that, um, that once we get through phase two and most of the people have been vaccinated that want vaccinated, then it'll, uh, then doctor's offices or whatever will, uh, be providing a lot of the, the, uh, the vaccine. So, oh, so I, I went over this, who, who's getting this? So this is in phase one. Moderna and Pfizer, it will take two doses. It will take several weeks to build up immunity. So if you get the, so somebody that gets the, the vaccination, um, the, on Christmas, let's say, they get vaccinated on Christmas, they won't get their second dose until mid-January. It'll probably take them two weeks beyond that. So that person, that person will not be immune until probably the first of February. So, so this is not just all going to go away quickly. No one is going to be required, uh, to, to, and compelled to get that vaccination because it's an emergency authorization. So that's where the people who, who have, uh, said, oh, I, you know, I'm concerned about the vaccine because, um, you know, it's, um, you know, it, it hasn't been tested. Well, when you, you test, uh, measles vaccine or different things like that, then they can say certain populations may be required to get a vaccine, but because it's under an emergency authorization, if people say they don't want it, we can't make them. And so they might even be an employee of us at the, the health department. We can't make that person get that vaccine. And so, um, now, uh, the, the public health vaccine is also going to be requiring an appointment. And the reason for that is that during H1N1, there were counties and jurisdictions, uh, that, that, uh, stockpiled their vaccine and it never got used. And then we had other places that didn't have any. And so there has to be a registration process, um, to get that vaccine. And, uh, when we go through that, that means if, if we have, uh, 150 people that are registered on, uh, let's say on January 2nd, then on January 1st, 150 doses will show up and we'll be able to, to vaccinate that person or those people. Um, and so it's not that we're going to be sitting on a whole lot of vaccine here. So when will that happen? Well, I already mentioned that, um, phase two, which is the general public, maybe in, in, uh, in late January, there's an enormous amount of logistics that, that are, that go on with this because we have to keep track of people. If you get a certain vaccine, then you have to come back within three to four weeks. If you're outside of that, then you have to get the first vaccine again. You can't, you can't mix and match the vaccines. And so there's, there's an awful lot to it. What do you do until then? Well, the same thing we're doing, we're saying now, face covering, some distancing, keep yourself healthy, avoid gatherings, testing, uh, isolation and quarantine if you are, are sick or if you're around, exposed to somebody. Um, and then if you, if you are ill, um, get treatment. You know, go to the, go see your medical provider. Um, you know, we've, we have had, um, we've had, uh, and at least one individual who's died in their home. They decided they were going to tough it out and, uh, they died in their home because they didn't seek treatment. So, you know, the, it's important for people to get treatment. So that's, that's what I, I have. And so if you have questions, I'll be glad to answer those, but thank you for bearing with me. I know that I got rather long-winded there.
Hey, Bob, does, does.
Appreciate that, Bob, and appreciate you showing up. Commissioner Heimball?
Yeah, it's been very helpful, very informative. Uh, does the Moderna, uh, vaccine require two doses like the Pfizer?
It, it does. Uh, however, it does not, it, it can be stored in a regular freezer, a good freezer.
Yeah, I've read about that.
Require two doses, um, as well. There's, they, they are, you know, and because it's going through the emergency authorization, there's, there's lots of things they haven't studied. I know there's a lot of people out there that, that'll say, well, I had COVID in October, so I don't need the vaccine. Well, they've, they found that, you know, the, the, your antibodies, um, you know, deplete over time. And so they're really not sure how long those, the, the antibodies stay in somebody's body, but, um, you, we do know that there are some people even in Garrett County who have been infected twice with COVID. And so, uh, there is some thought about if somebody has, has had it to, that they might get the vaccine one time as, as kind of a booster instead of getting it twice. But, you know, we certainly know, we know that probably 50% of the people are gun, are not going to get it, uh, because they, you know, they are you know, for whatever reason. And, and, and it is a free country, you know? And so people can choose not to do that. But, um, you know, we're, we're really hoping that we do get enough people vaccinated that that is, that's, in, in my opinion, that's truly the way out of this, this epidemic. If people want to see stores open, see restaurants fully open for indoor dining, see churches, you know, where people are singing without a face covering on and, or a meeting with 100% capacity. The way to do that is for as many people to get the vaccine as possible.
So, so one of the logistical challenges then is after people get the first shot is you've got to avoid a track and make sure they get back for the second one. So you didn't waste the first one then, correct?
That, yeah, that's, that's, uh, one of the reasons we have the, uh, that it'll have this registration system. We'll, we'll go ahead and register that person to come back when they get the vaccine the first time. And they'll, they'll, everybody will walk away, they'll have a card that'll be a reminder and, and we'll tell them, this is, you are, Mr. Heimball, you are vaccinated with Moderna, you know? And so if you, you know, if for some reason, you know, you're out of, out of the country or whatever, when you're supposed to come back, you know, you have that card and, and you come back after, you know, three and a half weeks, you know, to get the Moderna vaccine.
Well, that, that was a lot of very, as Paul said, that was a lot of very helpful information. I, um, appreciate you taking the time to share that with us. And, and I want to thank, as I know Paul and Larry agree, we've talked about it, to thank you and your staff for all the work that you, that you've been doing. They put in some long days and a lot of hours and, uh, I guess there is a light at the end of the tunnel with the vaccine, but we're in for, we're in for a pretty long, maybe boring winter here, I think.
Yeah.
I don't know what I'm gonna, what I'm gonna do when deer season's over. I have to spend a lot of time at home. I don't know what I'm gonna do.
Bob, uh, for the benefit of the folks, uh, out there, um, is, is there right now? Uh, I know there's recommendations, but is there a state mandate on the amount of people, a limit of the amount of people that can be in an individual home?
I, I would have to look at that, but I do not believe there is a, a limit on that. There's a 50% capacity for retail and for, um, there's a 50, yeah, there's a 50% capacity and certainly it is not advised to have a large group of people. You know, one of the things that, that has happened in some places is that people, not in Garrett County that we've found out about, but where people, uh, set up as a business that they will rent a large home, advertise it and say, we're going to have a party, uh, it's $50 to get in. They invite 200 people. And if they get slapped with a $5,000 fine, they still made money off of it. And so, um, if I did the math right, I don't know if I did the math right on that, but, uh, the, that, uh, that's happened in some of the, uh, some areas, you know, California and so forth.
Bob, backing up maybe a little bit, but, um, if you're tested for COVID, do you recommend an interval before you'd be tested again, or should be, should you be tested again? I mean, if I, if I got tested today and, and, and was negative, does that mean I can't get it?
No, that just, that means you were negative for that day.
Right.
And, and so you could come back in, um, and, you know, we certainly have people that, that we know of who have been tested and they come back a week later. And, and, and incidentally, you know, the nursing homes, now they are, they're, because they have outbreaks in all of our nursing homes, uh, they have, they have to test their staff and residents twice a week. Well, and so that, that, there's your answer, that they, they'll, um, they will, somebody will be negative, a staffer or resident will be negative when they test them on Monday and when they test them on Thursday, they're positive. And that's just, and so it, it's possible if you, if you expose yourself, then, you know, it's a good idea to get tested again.
Thank you.
All right. Any other, uh, Bob, you have any others, anything else you want to share? Are there any other questions for Bob?
Just tell people to come out and see me if they, if they think that they know, that they have, uh, good ideas. Tell them to come get tested tomorrow and then we'll, we'll probably go, we'll have to walk outside in the cold to talk. Because we, we're not going to want to be talking in the building, uh, but tell them to come out.
Well, we, uh, thanks again, Bob, for, for, uh, making time to spend with us today and, uh, and the last several meetings. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, just a couple of other things. That, that actually concludes the agenda. I have several things to, to go over here real quick. Uh, and then I know, uh, the other commissioners have some comments they'd like to make as well. First and foremost, um, just some housekeeping things. Uh, our next scheduled meeting is next Tuesday, the 15th. Keep your eye on that. Uh, we may postpone that a week depending on where we are, A, with, uh, urgent business that needs to be, uh, discussed, but also if there's any news on the horizon with the vaccine, uh, before we go into, uh, Christmas break, we, we may postpone that a week. Uh, but we will have one more meeting this month, uh, just a matter of when that will, when that will be. We have received, uh, several questions through GC, uh, comments, uh, and, and I think a lot of that was addressed already. Uh, I'll try to hit on a couple of other things, uh, as, as we move forward here. One thing I do want to mention, I think it's very important. We are on a Zoom meeting being broadcast on Facebook Live, and I know there's about 80 people watching right now. If you're making comments in the comment box on Facebook Live, we are not seeing that because we are on Zoom. If you have comments or questions, please send them either directly to one of us uh, or to GC comments, uh, and, and we will, we'll get an answer for you or answer during the meeting as best as we can. Um, I do appreciate all the emails that I've received, uh, and I'm sure, uh, Jim and Larry as well over the last probably two weeks, uh, as the pandemic has, has intensified here. And I've tried to answer all of them and I hope that I, I have. One, one thing I think Bob said that's, uh, significant and, and some of the concerns that people have sent in, have said, hey, people here still think it's a hoax and people aren't taking it seriously. And, and they think it's just the flu and so on and so forth. And Bob made the statement, I think there's a lot of merit to it. You know, through the beginning of this thing up until now, most people in Garrett County, a lot of people in Garrett County didn't know somebody personally who had been, uh, infected. Uh, and certainly not hospitalized or, or deceased. Just over the last month, I think that's changed dramatically for, I would say, most people in Garrett County know someone who has, uh, been infected for sure. And a lot of us now know someone who has deceased, uh, unfortunately. And, uh, I think people are taking this a, a little more seriously, but obviously there's a lot more work to be done. Uh, I do appreciate the, the, uh, you know, comments people make and, and suggestions, so on and so forth, uh, and trying to help. Um, and, and we certainly do appreciate that. We're, talk a lot about wearing masks and I know maybe someone's watching this meeting right now and seeing that none of the four of us have one on. Uh, all of us are, we're, we're not in the office right now. I know Commissioner Heimball is and he's in his office with the door closed. Mr. Knowles in his office with the door closed. I'm at home and, and Larry's at home, uh, by ourselves, but, uh, you know, obviously, with the numbers they are right now, uh, and with the things that, that Bob said and, and others have said, you know, the, the civic duty that we have to try to mitigate the spread of this and by, by all means necessary, is, is there. Another question that we've received, uh, is, are we going to close down rentals? Are we going to do, uh, are we going to close down churches? Are we going to close down, uh, restaurants and, and bars? This board from the beginning has said that we will follow the governor's orders. We talk with the health department all the time. It's still the position of this board that, uh, that's the, the route we're going to take as of right now. So hopefully. So hopefully that answers that question. We did receive some questions about schools. I think there were two or three questions that came through about the public school system, about various things. The Board of County Commissioners, as we have said repeatedly, have zero authority over the school system as far as their policies and procedures, how they open, when they open, who they open for, anything of that nature. What the metrics are that determine that for them is 100% the responsibility of the school system and not the commissioners. So legitimate questions, no, no doubt about it. But if you have a specific question about the schools or, or the operations of the schools, they need to be directed to superintendent or the school board. We have no jurisdiction or authority to comment or speak on that. We don't have the control over that. And so I wanted to, to mention that. One, another thing that's come up over the last year really, but again, in the last few weeks, where are we with Maryland television? And, and as we've said before, you know, we are working with particularly Congressman Trone. But our attorney has looked into this extensively. There is some debate, if you will, about whether it's possible to get both, to get two markets at one time. What is not debatable is that to do that would be very time consuming. And when I say time consuming, not the day-to-day work for one person to do it, although that would be the case as well. But you're looking at months to years to get it through. It's not something that's going to happen in a week and potentially a serious amount of money to do that. We have reached out to the congressman's office again this week to see, the last we left it with them. They had talked about potentially having some grant money or, or seeking some federal funds to help us file that petition. So we're waiting to hear back on that as well. I think that answers the majority of the questions that were sent in between that and what Bob had to say as well. We are working on, you know, I, I do want to make sure that people understand that there's constant collaboration in county between the emergency services unit, between the health department, between the hospital, between county government, sheriff's department on the, the response to COVID. And, and what we talked about doing and trying to organize is a situation where we can get the leads of those entities together to have some frequently asked questions answered. You know, that, that people sending in and, and have everyone at the table together can answer that and as far as a unified response. Having said that, Jim, Larry, anything to add?
I, I'd just like to echo what you said about the pandemic. It's here, it's very real. I, I personally know at least two people that have died as a result of the COVID. I know I've, I've significantly changed my lifestyle in terms of what I do and trying to be careful. And you may be a younger person and think that you're going to get it, not have a lot of the symptoms. And that, that may be true, but I, I don't, I don't know if anybody would want to be responsible, a younger person wouldn't want to be responsible for giving this to their mother, their father, their grandfather, grandmother, aunt, uncle, whatever. And resulting in them getting very sick or even dying. So I would just, as we have consistently, just encourage people to follow the CDC and, and the state, the governor's guidance in terms of wearing masks, distancing, washing hands, et cetera. So we, you know, we still got, we still have two or three months to go where it's going to be a tough haul. So it's, 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 it should be pretty apparent by now that it's nothing to fall with. Thank you.
I'd just like to bring up, listening to Bob, we were told several times in his presentation that churches have been traced to COVID outbreaks. And with the Christmas season coming upon us, I know churches are planning, a lot of churches are planning to have services and that brings a lot of people together. I would challenge the pastors and the, the leaders of each and every church in this county to try to maybe have more than one program to where so many people are not in a church at one time. Maybe do their service virtually upon. I know our church, we, we still haven't gone back into the church with the exception of very few people. I think this past Sunday, we had six in our church. The rest of the people were in the parking lot listening to our pastor with the radio. So I think if, if you get together and be innovative, you can still have a, a Christmas program, a Christmas pageant and whatever, and take it to the people, but you're going to have to do it differently. Try not have so many people in one place. The bigger churches, it's probably more of a challenge to you all than it is to the smaller churches. We don't have that many in our church. And so it's not quite as hard for us. But, you know, it, it is very difficult. I think it's, it's extremely difficult for the children that, that they can't participate maybe in, in a play or, or candle lighting or, or whatever it may be at, at your Christmas service. And so think about it, think about what you can do to, to still have a, a nice Christmas with your parishioners and, you know, get the message out that you want to get out. So I just, you know, make sure they wear face masks, make sure they have hand sanitizer. I know some churches check temperatures as you go into the building. I mean, put everything in place that you possibly can put in place to keep your, your congregation and everyone safe. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Titchnell. Anything else for the good of the order? Mr. Knoll, anything else?
And no, sir, I have nothing else. Thank you.
All right, I, I would once again remind everybody that we will have one more meeting. It's scheduled right now for the 15th. That is possible. It might change depending on the timing of any kind of news on the vaccine. I would also encourage everyone to, if you have further questions, comments, concerns, please send them to us either individually or through GC comments. And if there's nothing, and I do want to thank Bob Stevens again for his time tonight. One, one other real quick thing, it got two emails to GC comments that were concerned with the amount of time we put on the agenda to discuss certain topics, in particular this with COVID. We obviously have an agenda and we try to put a time with it. But at no point in the six years that we've been together that I know of, have we ever cut a topic off? If, you know, we were discussing it or someone was discussing it or having dialogue with it. So we, we will not limit that, you know, if, if there's things to discuss or talk about, we will certainly address that. So I just wanted to address that. That's the last thing I think from those comments that we received. So thank you all very much for tuning in. And if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn, meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much. Stay safe.